Padres, Lincoln, or Branda Meadows, that they're all great programs and your students will do well in any of them. So we're striving for better linguistic balance. But I would say, I'd have to have Virginia poll, but I would probably say that it reflects our district where about overall a third of the students in the program, combining all the three programs are English only and/or reclassified English students.
We're going to be going, running the meeting after we finish the public comments or questions. Okay? And just get in line. And we'll go one by one.
Buenas tardes. My name is Sylvia Huerta. Thanks for giving us our experiences with this program of double immersion.
Good evening. My name is Sylvia Huerta, and I wanted to thank you for sharing our district's experiences on a dual immersion program.
This program was put out from the beginning to make sure that no child would stay behind. Because the law didn't help at all. Bush said that no child should stay behind. This program didn't work.
She feels that this program should have been implemented very long time ago, since the beginning, so that our students would not have fallen behind. And ever since Bush implemented the "no child left behind" should have been put in place. And she feels that "no child left behind" did not serve its purpose. It did not work.
I have a very beautiful experience because I went there with my daughter. My daughter went to kindergarten. When she left kindergarten, she spoke two languages. She multiplied, summed, and subtracted. A bilingual, multicultural girl who didn't speak very well Spanish and English. Now she's going up nicely. When she went to junior high.
My experience was a good one. At Los Padres, I had a daughter that entered kindergarten there. And by the time she exited kindergarten, she was speaking two languages. She was bilingual, multicultural. And at this point, she is at grade level in junior high.
It's been like five, eight years. I'm not sure. I don't remember. But I received a scholarship for the double immersion in all schools. And I think it has to be remembered that people who are here within this district remember that I'm not lying. I received a scholarship for all schools to put the double immersion. What happened? The unions took it. The teachers don't want it.
If I recall correctly, about five to eight years ago, the district was granted funds to implement this program across the district. And I'm remembering this. I'm not lying. What happened to these funds? Why did, you know, I believe that it was because of the teachers that shot the program down. Why was this allowed to happen?
I think it's time to think about our students' education, being that 100% of our population are Latino. And if you are sitting there in those chairs, it is time to think as to why we put you there.
Where do you get your statistics for 100%?
Muchas gracias.
This is the last one. No, which came up?
I'm a volunteer in the schools. And the number is growing. There are more Latinos than Latinos of another race. And I can show you in the schools that I go to. There are so many Latinos. Every day I go there.
She knows this for fact and personal experience. She is a parent volunteer involved at most of our schools. And she sees this greatly, that the Hispanic student population is growing day by day. And if you'd like, she can take you out with her and show you what the student population looks like.
Well, no. I'm just disagreeing with her because we have a very diverse population in Salinas. Yes, there is many Latinos, but there are other nationalities also. So I don't agree with their 100%. I mean, no, I'm happy that she goes and volunteers, but I do not believe that there's 100% Latinos.
I'm sorry that I don't agree. A sister of mine from Boronda has two daughters who haven't gone to school because there's no cupola. I can show you with facts, not with words.
I'm sorry you feel that way. The fact is that I have a sister that has two students that are currently not in school. They're on a waiting list to enter Boronda because there is no room there.
Señora Huerta, gracias.
I'm sorry. They are in school there. I guess I'm thinking she's referring to the dual immersion program.
Okay. I'm ready to bring them over.
We have another speaker behind. Ms. Huerta, and we have another speaker behind. And we're going to be next. This time, because I thought of.
For me, right? Very good. I make it quick. I just wanted to ask the clarification question that was kind of tough, by the way, said on the phonics. If the English phonics are then actually taught explicitly and served right in the dual immersion program, or they kind of have to be absorbed by osmosis? And the other question I had, I totally understand that this kind of a program is a commitment program where you stay in from kindergarten to, in our case, sixth grade, preferably through middle school and high school. But what happens if you deal with a relatively mobile population that does move from school to school, or from district to district, or from city to city? And they move out before these goals are accomplished? How do they fare after that? Or what happens to them if they have to move out and they are halfway through the program?
Thank you for your question. Dr. Lewis and his family for answering questions.
Everything else has been thought. This is not brand new. This has like over 30 years in action. So.
So from the very beginning, we asked for a multi-year commitment on the part of the families. So the parents are choosing the program to, and they know at their orientation that they're making a multi-year commitment. When families are forced to leave because of economic reasons, it used to be that we were nervous. Five programs in California, where are they going? You know, where are they going to move to? Now with 259 programs, our parents are very sophisticated. They know the network very well, and they choose the schools. And any student who has had experience in two-way programs actually can move into when there's, you know, room and capacity, they can actually, a second grader leaves, can move into a second grade program elsewhere. So we have so many more program options. The first question about phonics instruction is, there is, phonics instruction is definitely the perspective or the goal of our Spanish program. But once the students start moving into English, third grade is about teaching them the phonics skills that they didn't, that are unique to the English language. And so there's a tremendous amount of work with what we call non-transferable skills in third grade so that students move into and transition into English fluency without a problem. And that when we do that well, the vast majority of the children enter, end third grade on grade level in English reading.
Question, or, please.
Buenas tardes. My name is Olivia Molinero. I come from Los Padres. I have four children. The four of them are bilingual. Two have currently been reclassified in grades, fourth grade and 10th grade. And the other two are also, like I said, bilingual. Thank you for giving support in your language. If your language is English, the support was taken in the house in Spanish. Now they're bilingual. And they're teaching me and other girls.
I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using.
I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their first language as Spanish and their second language as English. And the support has always been there at home as well. And they are now helping me, supporting me with the two languages that they are capable of using. I want to thank you for your support of helping my children be bilingual in their
obligados a hacer lo que queremos, lo que es necesario para los niños. Thank you. And basically, what I'm saying is, thank you very much for being here, and we are doing our best with all the tools we have for children. And I want to thank you very much for the presentation. I'm going to go to the next person.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay? And we've already talked, I keep saying that items are not on the agenda to include, which includes, we, we heard on multi-language, okay, but is there another idea, concern, or program you want to bring to us? That's okay.
Buenas tardes, doctor Lusa directiva. Este, me dijo ustedes con mucho respeto, con todo, okay? Realmente, mi preocupación quisiera apoyar el programa de doble inversión para mi escuela, Sherwood, y no nada más para mi escuela, para todas las escuelas que pertenecen a este district.
Good evening, board. I'm speaking to you this, tonight, with all due respect, not to all, but, sorry. Basically, I am here asking for a support of implementation of dual immersion program, not only at Sherwood, but across the district.
Muchísimas gracias. Thank you.
Quisiera decirle al señor Larson, que a lo mejor no es el, el cien por ciento de niños latinos, pero si es un ochenta y siete por ciento, y que quisiera que se respetara un poco a las, a las personas que vienen aquí a hablar, porque usted no tiene ningún respeto hacia nosotros. Lamento que le quede un poco de esa silla.
I would like to ask Mr. Larson to please have respect for the, the, the us of us that stand up here and, and have concerns and comments, and you're not showing very much respect. It may not be a hundred percent Latin Hispanic students, but it is an eighty-seven percent. And she feels that your chair fits you a little bit big.
Thank you very much.
Disculpen, señor Larson, pero ha llegado tarde, no vota cuando debe de votar, y creo que ese es su deber. Disculpen, esa directiva, doctor Lusa, lamento decir esto, pero es mi opinión.
She apologizes, but she does recognize that he is constantly linked to the meetings and is not here when it's needed to vote. And again, she apologizes, but that's her opinion.
Okay, that's her exclusive. The questions are, the presentation is already over, so we're going to go back into order of our business here. Okay, I would like to address those, please. Now, you can.
Today, I apologize that I was late. I was coming here. I do teach in Hollister. Sometimes it's a little difficult for me. Last week I had a medical issue, which I therefore couldn't be now. As for disrespecting, I had no issue or trying to disrespect anyone. I just wanted to know where, where the statistic a hundred percent. Now, as for Latino and any Caucasian, African-American, all the nationalities that we have in Salinas, I, I believe we should represent all, all right? Now, I understand that you're coming and you, you want dual immersion. I agree with you. I, I don't know why you guys choose to battle with me, I just asked the question about your statistics, because my son, who is not Hispanic, that's one, one student, I'm just presenting my son, who is, also is in the district, wouldn't that skew your data? That's why I'm asking. Now, as for everything else, I, I can't address that, but I, I meant no disrespect. And as for coming late, I, I could not be here just because I'm coming from Hollister, so I apologize for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Larson. And we're going to go into consent items. Thank you.
I'd like to move approval to, for all of the consent items.
Motion on the floor by Ms. Barnes. Do I get a second on consent items?
Second.
So second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Excuse me, I have a change.
Yes, ma'am.
At least be a change on number two. The first, first and on two A, her assignment date will be February twenty-first.
Okay. Did we get that notice?
I amend my motion to include.
So corrected, if I get a motion again, I mean a second?
Second.
Go second, okay. Any conversation on this? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're taking both. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, four zero. Yes.
I had a question about one, something on the consent agenda.
Something on the consent agenda. Okay, can you draw attention to that right now, or?
Yeah, question on number seven, eight.
Yes. What's the question?
Well, I'm, I've read through, and I don't exactly understand what the contract is for. I mean, I understand that they're looking at, at benefits and retirees, but I wasn't quite understanding what this was for. The other thing was that it says that there, if, if any other, if any required meetings are held, that they, we would rebuild an additional fee of sixteen hundred dollars, and I was wondering if we expect that to happen when we would need it.
If I may, I, you finished with a question? I can direct this over to Mr. Stratton. Mr. Stratton, to clarify, the information, the way I received it was?
It's an actual study that's required every two years by law to update our benefits liability, and TCS puts in there the additional funds that they would take to come here. They didn't need to come here last time, they just put that in, they won't need to come here this time, we'll do everything electronically. That's a firm fixed fee, and we will not exceed that.
So clarify. Okay. Okay, action items list. Okay, I apologize for grabbing this thing over here because it's important. Okay, Mrs. Willingham, you are going to items number one, human resources director, job description.
And this has been to the board for information twice, and we believe that we've included all of the changes that we asked for last time.
Okay, we have discussion. Is this an action item? Working out?
No.
Working out? I'm going to open up my own show. An action item, if I may, action item, and then we're going to number one, which is human resources director job description, and then number two would be take action on the one. Questions by the board? Yeah. We do have this, teachers union, please, your questions or concerns? It's a twenty-page document, isn't it? Feel that way.
I just had a question. As I was reading through, I noticed that it says that the position is evaluated annually, and I was wondering if that is true of all administrative positions, or is this, is this new, or is it something that's continuing from before? And I also wanted to say that I was kind of looking at that job pile of human resources, and I just want to put it in that I like the idea of personnel better. Human resources to me sounds too businesslike. I think we're a group of people and that we're very, to put us into those little slots of being a business, I think is, is not appropriate, but I just want to make that pop.
Dr. Lusa, you have a comment on that, and also Ms. Willingham.
Regarding with the name, we're moving with the rest of the society. For years, years past, human resources tradition has been the name, I mean, the interpersonnel has been the name of that office. With responsibilities and adopting the job description, every school district is moving into human resources and more comprehensive title for the responsibility, for the current responsibilities. Anything else you want to add, Ben?
No.
And the evaluation, yes, you're correct, administration is evaluated to the pleasure of the board of education. And in this, if I say evaluation, evaluated annually, that's good, that's a good step, because I believe, yeah, administration should be evaluated in more regular basis. Administration hasn't been evaluated in so many years, and we're moving in the right direction, but it's up to the board anyway.
I'd like to move approval.
We do have a motion on the floor to accept the recommendation. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do I hear one second or two seconds? Mr. Kim?
Mr. Larson.
Mr. Larson, second?
Yes.
Okay. So move, any conversation on this recommendation? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Four zero. Thank you. Okay, the next item is E-rate contracts for year eighteen. And, hmm, Mr. Terry, right?
Yes. A brief presentation. Every year, the district avails itself to the federal funding that's commonly known as E-rate. The funding comes through based on our clear reduced lunch population, and this year, the federal government decided it was an overtime to change the program and its funding process. It's basically paying approximately fifty percent of what we need to do in E-rate, and E-rate is our network backbone. So we've got two contracts this year that we're asking you to authorize to enter into. One of them is for cabling, network cabling, and this project would be at Little Ronde School, and the second project contract is for network equipment across the district.
Any questions, board members? Yes, Barnes?
When, when is it done? I mean, all the cabling? I know we keep doing it and adding, is it, is it ever done, or is this going to happen every single year?
That's an excellent question. There are a couple schools of thought, no pun intended. We would, what we're doing is we're cabling, right now, this particular project is to cable with available funds from the federal government to cable around the middle. Oh, I'm sorry, over on, cabling in general, you'll see cabling next year, I think next year. This is actually a sad note. Next year, the word on the street from the E-rate people is that the federal government won't fund cabling anymore. Not good for us, because what we're trying to do with these cabling projects, and I see Monica back there shaking her head, we really are, what we're doing is we're ramping up the amount of data that we can, what we call delivering to the desktop, and right now, we can deliver one gig to the desktop, that's basically four motion videos for depth at any, any one classroom, any one desktop in a classroom, and Monica has been pinning on all of us to future move, because funding's going away, to get ten gigs to the desktop. So that would tell you that there's a lot of future cable that needs to be done in order to do that, because the cabling is all about how big the pipeline is to send the data through. And they don't make it any bigger. We put the best we can, and then here comes the newest stuff, and here comes a demand for more bandwidth, so that's how we're, that's what we keep doing. We are now up to four radios and a wireless device, there's a cable behind that. When they say wireless, it's not wireless, there's now four radios in that device, and we're now, you can put two devices in a classroom in order to push the data. It's pretty intense as to what's required in this infrastructure.
Sounds like it's a business of which your stock money is.
Absolutely right. That's why we're doing so well. Pulling them out.
Do we have questions, Mr. Reed?
Yeah, I just was, is that the reason you're doing it around the schools, because of the funding going away, or was?
The difference between the funding going away and our share to pay, we're, we've made this, analyzed this as the best solution at this particular point in time. Next year, we're going to try and, and push the gig rate higher at all the rest of the schools on our last cabling project.
Last, any more questions? Mr. Reed? None, say none.
I just wanted to make a quick comment. Monica's thinking ahead. We still have technical problems where if all of us get on ORs on one, on one day at one site, we, we can't get on, because there's still not enough. So planning ahead is what they're doing with this money right now, and I totally agree. We need more bandwidth, we need more access points. I mean, it's an ongoing problem as we get more and more devices, so. It's a good thing, it's a good thing.
There's a motion to approve. So second, any discussion? Say none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Five, four zero. Our next meeting will be on the thirteenth of April, at six-thirty, or later.
Can I make a comment? We don't really have much, where, where board members can speak, but I just want to make one comment, and that is, I want to ask any of the administrators that are here, make sure you print the report cards for the teachers. I, I watched that, and teachers were doing their report cards. I don't know that you personally do, or you have someone there, but it was, not, I wouldn't say a fiasco, but it was, it was really a mess for teachers, having to print all of their report cards, because in the past, someone has done it for them, and this is the first year that most of them, well, it depends on the school, depends on the school, but the school I was in, I think that
Thank you.
it needs to be done.
Thank you very much, all those in favor, we're closed. Okay, we're closed. The time is seven, I mean, six forty-three.